Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tumbler City Council meeting. It's five thirty, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and I would like to ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember Mike Consider? Mayor Johnson?
Here. The next item on our agenda is to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Move the agenda.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Abstained.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
The next item is our city administrator's report to council. The show is from the topless. I'll turn it over to Phil. Where is our city administrator?
All right. Thank you, Admiral Mayor. So just, I didn't have a super long report. I just wanted to highlight last week, the city council and the county board supervisors were here for a work session. It was a special work session to talk about development and the potential for incentives that might go along with that. And so earlier tonight, I had sent a message, but also followed up with a draft here. And just a couple of different potential areas where city council may be interested in providing incentives. This is not looking at the specific dollars or the terms or anything like that. Just, for example, if it was something that was going to encourage job creation, would you be in favor of it? Check yes or no. And then this will be used to help with furthering a development tool that can be utilized. It would come back for council official approval, and that would have specifics in it. This is very, an overview of looking at areas where we would or wouldn't be willing as a community to provide incentives. So please just take a few moments and fill that out. If you have done after the meeting and turned it in, great. We just want to, it was stated at the end of the meeting, work session last week, that this is a high priority. So just keep moving things along. Got that out. And then next week, there will be work session on a number of items that the mayor and council members have requested. And so that is again a work session to talk through a variety of topics, and that is going to be held, at least at the moment, at the depot in the conference room there. So I think that is the plan. That's same five thirty time next Tuesday, and look for the agenda later at the end of this week or beginning next week. And the last thing is voting has opened in the state, so get out in mar-
Tomorrow.
I'm sorry, tomorrow. Well, we're not gonna go now anyway, so. So if you can't make it to the polling place on election day, you'll be able to go and cast a ballot before that. Get out and vote. Encourage everybody to do that. All right. That is all ahead for tonight.
Thank you, Phil. The next item is to ask if any citizens want to speak on any of our agenda items on the city agenda tonight. We don't have any white slips up here, but sometimes people don't fill them out. So does anybody want to speak on any of our agenda items tonight?
One guy doesn't want to hear what your agenda is. I don't have a paper.
Your agenda right over there by JD.
Jake, give me a-
Okay. We'll call on you, sir, when we get to that part of the agenda. We had four public hearings, so we'll start with the first one.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing to approve a lease agreement for 14521 Second Avenue, 6,000 square feet of building number 54 located at the Atomo Regional Airport.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. JD, I believe you're going to discuss this.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Zack Ashmore has proposed a lease space, the building 34 at Atomo Regional Airport, for a term of two years, beginning November 1st, 2024, through October 31st, 2026. After we push near the two-year term, both parties may agree to extend the lease to another two-year period. Mr. Ashmore for $550 per month. At any given time, we can, if we have another renter that wants to come in, let's say for more of a dollar figure, because it has been leased out for more in the past. We don't want the building to sit empty. He has an agreement of 60 days notice, and it's the same thing at his side or our side. If he wants out of the lease, we give him 60 days. It gives us 60 days.
And Mr. Ashmore has already been bringing that-
Yes, he had a business center called Universal Products. It is no longer a business, but he has it for personal use now for just storage. And the airport advisory board did approve this in their last meetings.
Does the council have any questions for JD?
What, you said personal storage. Does that have something to do with the business, or is that vehicles or trailers?
It's all, and this is a building that doesn't have like an entrance for a vehicle to pull into. It's all docked storage back in, when the Navy Base was there, it was cold storage is what it was. Every 10 to 12 feet in there, there's a six-by-six or eight-by-eight pillar all throughout the building. That's why it's kind of not a real favorable building to lease out, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they want to make on this specific item? Okay, if not, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, ma'am?
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 227, 2024, approving a lease agreement between the city of the Tumbler and Zack Ashmore for approximately 6,000 square feet of building number 34 at the Atomo Regional Airport. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 227, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on a proposal to convey real property located at 1229 Brentwood, Atomo, Iowa, to Weston McKee and the hearing thereon.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Zack, I believe you're carrying this.
Yes, I should, Eric. Thank you, council. This item is to sell some property, but before we actually talk about this particular piece of property, I wanted to do a really brief presentation of the program by which we came to own the property, so we can give an understanding of how this got here tonight. So there's a presentation that Travis will pull up. This is about 109 East Woodland and about 678 property. It's pretty timely because 109 East Woodland is a property that went through the same process that just got finished with rehabilitation, actually today. Then we released the placard. So if we go on to the next slide. The city applies property from time to time under Iowa code 67A. That's the code for abandoned and unsafe buildings abatement by rehabilitation. And 67A-10B is a process by which the city or county can obtain title to abandoned property. And we've done that for a few reasons. One is because we consider it a demolition diversion program. We see some cost savings if we can take properties that are abandoned, have code violations, have issues, but can be saved from demolition. We see some cost savings. We see some policy benefits. It allows us to place the property into the hands of someone who can restore it to productive use. And at any given time, we might have 15 to 20 pending cases where we would try to acquire property using this code section. We're very successful with cases. We almost always win in cases that go to trial. We do sometimes settle cases for some kind of stipulated agreement where the owner will instead get the property restored themselves, and that we also consider to be a success because we don't stop pursuing these cases until the property can be put back for productive use. Next slide here. So 109 East Woodland is one of those cases. It was planted in August of 2022 when we were pulled out by the fire department for an issue with living conditions. There was a gentleman living in that house, and as you'll see in some of the photos, it was just an extremely unsanitary condition, and there were some other code violations related to the property as well. The property, we were abandoned, that property, he found another living situation after that, and he had no family that was interested in doing anything else with the property. The city filed an action under 67A in September of 2023, and we were able to acquire that title in February 2024. One thing I'll note about those dates is this is not a fast process. There's a lot of things built into that code section that are meant to protect property owner rights and to give people a lot of time to respond and a lot of time for the city to have to prove that the property is truly abandoned. When we acquired that title, I want to appreciate Phil. He went along with an idea I had to invest $2,200 to clean the interior of that property. You'll see in the photos, we tried to sell it the condition it was in. We did not think we were going to get very good bids. So we did a little bit of investment to get that property cleaned, and we were able to sell that property to Manny Martinez for $35,000. That's a pretty high figure for what these typically sell for, so we thought that was a good investment. Martinez completed that rehab today and is prepared to list the property for sale for $180,000. If we go to the next slide and see some of the photos before, that's the state of the interior. The next slide here, that's some of the issues at the outside. The exterior of the property was also not being maintained for volunteer trees and tall grass, things like that. Then the third slide has just got some more interior photos there. These are the things that we wanted to clean out so that we could show it to somebody who would see that there was still a building that was plumb, was in good structural condition, and just needed a lot of attention on the finishes. And then the next few photos are the condition today. Obviously, the outside's been landscaped appropriately, cleaned up inside as well. Next slide. The floors have been refinished, the original woodwork refinished in the windows. And there's one more set of photos here as well, the kitchen and the floors. This house is ready, just about ready to be moved in and is ready to be listed for sale. So there's just one more slide here as well. This is the economic impact. We were able to maintain a home that's available for a family to live in in Atomo. We're able to provide some work opportunities for local contractors and tradespeople. And an evaluation of 150,000 to 160,000, the property would generate $3,000 in property tax for the city, the schools, the county. Whereas if it were demolished, obviously, it'd be nothing. And then we're able to prevent the expensive demolition, which on average is about $17,000 property. So this is a really good program that we're glad that we have the access to, and this property is another that was obtained through that process. So 1229 Brentwood was obtained by the city under this code section, and we placed, we also did a little bit of investment in this one, not a little bit of financial. We had the contractor that we used for doing tree removal and things like that clean up a little bit of the front of the property. And then we also had a couple staff members who volunteered to do some Saturday overtime to clean out the inside of the building. And then we were able to show that property. We accepted bids on the property until October 1st at 3:00 p.m., and we received four bids. Weston McKee submitted the best bid in the amount of $81,200, and some staff recommends alerting him the bid proceeding to close on this property so that he can get it rehabilitated and get it occupied.
So this property was in much better shape to begin, but for the 109 Woodland, then?
It was definitely in better shape.
Does the council have any questions for Zack?
What was our investment? It was abandoned, so we took it.
Yeah.
As abandoned, but we made some investment in it in cleaning it up, getting it really more refinishing.
Yeah, something like $1,200. It's definitely in that area to do the, to clear out some trees that were in the front that made it really look unattractive from the curb. We cleared that up, and then our staff members put in eight or 12 hours apiece, and they asked for, you know, comp time or overtime on that. But we were able to get this one for $82,000. And we knew we would get good bids on this. This is definitely the best property, the condition property we've had, and it's also in a location where it's going to happen.
So the overall investment on the part of the city might be less than $10,000?
Yeah.
And I was able to walk through this house, and I've seen the house prior to it too, and it was in phenomenal condition. And then just the little amount, not little, but the amount of work you all put into it also just completely changed the vibe of that house. And it's such a great neighborhood, so this will, this was great to see such a high bid.
Any other questions, comments from council?
How long will the total process take on this house from the time?
This was, again, probably going to be in around the 18 months to two years from when we identified it as abandoned. And this one was probably abandoned for quite a while longer than we knew because it was in a nice neighborhood. It didn't look terrible from the outside. It needed to have the grass mowed, but other than that, it was, it was not something that we saw right away was abandoned. But when we went inside for the first time, it was kind of like a time machine. You had the guys nailed from the 90s and nothing else kind of newer than that around the house. But it was, you know, the roof was held, holding up. The place was dry.
So how do you determine that it's abandoned?
Yeah, so we usually are receiving some kind of nuisance complaints or things like that. We don't make any contact with the owners, usually a good condition or a good indication, or if we're making contact with the owner, but they're not making any progress, they're not even making any progress, they're moving away from it, whatever those other conditions are, we start to see that it's meeting the criteria set out in code. And then we'll get in touch with the attorneys and say, you know, hey, we want to refer this one. Here's the file. They look through it. They agree that it meets the requirements, and we decide we're going to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Since this is a public hearing, has anyone in the audience had any questions or comments they want to make regarding this particular property?
The job well done.
I would agree.
And this is a program that Jake Rush does a lot of work on. He did the bids. He was one of the staff members that did the overtime, doing the cleanup. He's, he's really a good asset on this program.
Thank you, Jake. If there's no other comments from anyone, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 232, 2024, accepting the bid and approving the conveyance of certain real property at 1229 Brentwood to Weston McKee in the amount of $81,200. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 232, 2024.
Do we have the motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey interest in real property at 1317 East Mary Street to settlement alue pursuant to a proposed purchase agreement.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe Zack, you're going to cover this one as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is also a sale of property, but it's not at all related to 67A. This is a vacant lot that the city acquired from the state as part of the highway project that's around the Riverside Restaurant and the gas station there. At some point, I don't know when this was. I don't, haven't seen any record when it was. The city's generally permitted Mr. Aliu, who owns the Riverside Restaurant and the station there, to use a gravel truck apron that runs over onto this property. And he's interested in purchasing the property. He made the offer of $10,000 for the purchase of the property. He wants to pave and improve that truck apron and then make it so that it's a better experience for over-the-road truck drivers and his customers. Looking at the characteristics of the lot, it isn't really useful for any kind of other development there. It's, it gets pretty narrow. And so we think the best use for it as real estate would be to sell it to the neighboring property owner, and we consider the offer of $10,000 to be reasonable for the characteristics of the property.
Does council have any questions or comments for Zack? Does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions regarding this particular property?
It was smaller than I expected it to be when I grew up. It looked at these tiny pieces.
Yeah, we had to get it surveyed to make sure that we identified all the boundaries there and what was right away and what is actually available as real estate.
And we say, we paid for the survey?
We did. That's, that's one of the factors that went into deciding on that $10,000 price. He'll be responsible for half of closing costs, and he'll be responsible for reporting these.
Okay, if there's no other questions, that entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 234, 2024, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property at 1317 East Mary Street to settlement alue and approving and authorizing execution of a related purchase agreement. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 234, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost, awarding the contract, and approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the Blake's Branch Sewer Separation Phase Eight Division Three project.
I'll open the public hearing, and Philip, Phil Myers is going to handle this.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Travis, did you ever get that second one downloaded?
Nope.
Okay. So we had a drone flight, but it won't copy this computer. So all we have is a background presentation. A lot of you guys have seen before, Division Two came out, but we have a new council member. So I want to hear this, Randy Johnson from Beanstrand Kim. He's going to give kind of a background on sewer separation and what it is, how it came to be, and what got us to this point. And we'll go into this particular project when we go with that.
Good evening. So I think some of you all have seen this before. It's kind of a continuation of a project that started way back in 2003. We've been, or Beanstrand Kim, we've been kind of helping the city all through this project. As, as you were aware, I think, like Philip was saying, we did have contracts here earlier in the spring for Division Two, which you're seeing on Forest Street. This is part of that project. Division Three now is a continuation of approximately a $15 million project. So if you know the next slide. So really what this is all in regards to is Blake's Branch Creek, which also now is a box. That was built in the early, wow, 1900s. I think the original design drawing is 1899. So they built a box all through this drainage, covered it up, and then they started putting pipes into it. So this is where it discharges into the Des Moines River. This is a Blake's box. Next slide. So combined sewers, I think you all are aware, what happens if in dry weather, you know, we have one pipe, and it's storm and sanitary. So all the buildings are combined into one pipe. And so on dry weather, everything goes to another pipe that goes to the treatment plant. When we have a good rain event, the pipe to the treatment plant can handle it, and it bypasses into the Des Moines River. And so, next slide. So back in 2003, when the city received their NPS permit for the wastewater treatment plant to operate that, they required the city to start taking steps for separating this combined sewer system. And this Blake's Branch is one of 10 combined sewers that the city has. And so we developed a long-term control plan, identified 10 phases or 10 drainages that we've started developing projects for. And as of today, you know, I think we're on phase eight. So we're on the eighth drainage area that we're doing sewer separation. So back in 2011, B and R agreed with our plan, and we're one of the first communities here to get a 25-year schedule. So next slide. This is just kind of a, again, just a smaller box than one of the other drainages, but you can kind of see what else is cut out of it. Like it's oval, double all brick, and built in the early 1900s or 18, late 1800s. So next slide. You can't see it, and I'll try to be loud. So this is a map that Philip's teammate. And if you see all these little colored areas all through here, that is separation projects that have been completed by the city. So out of all of them, south of the river, we're pretty good. This was Division One. That was Main Street and south of the railroad that we just completed here, oh, this past year. And so this now, can you go to the next slide? We'll go to the next slide. We don't have the drone flight. But here's one of the original drawings. So 1899. If you could read it up in the right corner, I'm going to tell you it's 1899. So it's an eight-foot high, 10-foot wide, and about 8,000 feet. So they built it over 10 years, and I think you guys have the construction documents that shows how far they made it each year. And that came to the winter about this time, and they just kind of, okay, we're done for the year. Let's just kind of tidy it up and just continue the following year. So this is really what we are separating. So right now, it's all, in this drainage, you know, we're taking about a quarter of the combined sewers out of this box, but we still have a lot more to go. We're only a third of the way through this. So next slide, please. This is actual photos of the box. So it's, if you, to me, I admire the craftsmanship that this is still in use and in such great shape. The top left, you see that large hole right there or large entrance? That's Forest Street. That's what we're separating right now. So there's a combined sewer that's about four foot by three foot that travels down Forest Street. So what you see us separating right now, that's, that's where that's at. Next slide. So that shows the Blake Branch drainage. So if I can go back over there. This was Main Street, you know, up here about Forest Street, and we're kind of separating here. So you can see there's still a long portion that we have not, we have to hit to, you know, taking it a step at a time. Next. And what these colored documents are is just how we've kind of broken out into what we call divisions. As reason phase eight as this large project. So just different aspects. So while we're going through adding a separate pipe next to Blake's box, so we have a large 36-inch sanitary sewer, but we still use Blake's box as stormwater, let it go to the river. So these are just side streets that we have to separate because there's one pipe going down the side streets. Well, we need two pipes to be able to separate what happens up the side, down the side street. So next. This was Division Two, kind of what we were just talking about. Right now, you've seen Forest Street kind of getting done, and the box, if I can, kind of goes right through here. And so that new section right there is where we got to separate a lot of the additional pipes. Next slide. And this is Division Three. So this continues north. The line on the left would be our 36-inch trunk sewer. It's really kind of close to where the existing Blake's box is, and then the side streets are where we're separating out a lot of that. So approximately 30 blocks. So it's going to be over three years here that we're going to do this separation.
You want to wait while we're up here. I got a few numbers on the size of the project. We have 20, like you said, 30 blocks of new pavement, which is 25,500 square yards of concrete pavement. There's approximately 1,500 square yards of driveways, 4,500 square yards of concrete sidewalks, 1,500 square yards of seal coat pavement, and then 8,500 feet of new storm sewers. 2,300 millennial feet of trunk sanitary sewer.
A large 36-inch pipe.
Yeah, and then 3,500 feet of smaller sanitary sewer, like the distribution branches. Then around 10,000 feet of water services and water mains. And that's, in addition, we have excavations and backbelts, erosion controls, you know, testing, service restoration. So that's where all the money's going. And just because of the way the creek's running, so the Blake's Branch has followed the old creek, and it'll go up along a bluff kind of, or a tall hill, and it'll weave back over. So we've had to cross the big box twice. Once we'll have to directionally drill through rock to get across to the west side of it. And then once we get to Jefferson Street, we have to cross back to the east side of it because it goes along another kind of bluff where there's rock in it, and we can't make it on that side. So it's kind of a logistical process to make sure you can keep it flowing downhill, but yet cross this box where you need to without having to create a, you know, 30-foot by 30-foot conflict structure or 25, 20-foot conflict structure. That's going to cost us, you know, a million and a half dollars or something. So we're trying to route it the most efficient way possible, and it just takes a lot of work.
Yeah, so we're almost to the end. So up on the left where that's Jefferson Street, you can kind of see that. That'll be where we continue on. So right now, the box actually goes along Jefferson, and it's, you can kind of see the manholes that are in the driveways. So the box is right adjacent to houses that are up through there. So, so there's just, there's some interesting nuances because we'll, we'll find the box really almost right adjacent to a house foundation. So it makes it a really challenging dig for the contractors.
Can you give us any area where you're talking about on Jefferson Street?
This project, you know where the old gas station was there at? This project, you know where the old gas station was there at the corner?
Yes.
We're ending right there at the bottom of the hill. The next phase is going to go up Jefferson. And as I said, that's where it goes right in front of houses, it goes under houses, it goes through that park there, you can see a little hill in the park, that's the sewer there too, so. Anyway.
Next slide. I think that's it, yeah. We're open for questions, so I think, like Philip said, we, I guess I'll let you go through both. Had very successful four bidders, which I was pleasantly surprised that we had such interest on that, so we got duty good bids, but this, I will excuse myself.
I just have a quick question. So are we worried about the integrity of the structure as we go in and out of the boxes?
No.
No, there's a few spots where the bottom of the structure's been washed out, we've repaired those over the years, but some of those limestone structures you see there, like the structure built in, you know, nineteen hundred, actually connected existing culverts that were in place in who knows when, but the brickwork is, it looks like it's ten years old in some spots. It's just, I don't think there's any concern about the integrity of the box at all.
Isn't the north side the top of the last part of this project to get finished?
Yeah, the south sides, I wouldn't say a hundred percent done because we keep finding stuff all the time. I'd say ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent done on the south side. Might be a stray intake here and there that sometimes we pulled off, but the north side's got quite a bit of work left to do.
What about one of that big area at the end of Milner Street that exits into the lagoon? You know where I'm talking about?
Yep.
Okay. Where does that go? What does that do?
At Milner Street, so that, that actually drains all the way from Lake Road, south of Mary Street, like the whole southwest section of town, that drains all from there, and it comes out in Milner Street. And we have a, that's all storm, that big box is all.
That's been separated, okay.
Yep, there is a sanitary line that comes in right next to the outlet that pumps back to Benly. There's, this is why I'm saying ninety percent done, there's roof drains or foundation drains or, you know, downspouts or something connected to that sewer. So if you get a big, big rain, we'll still have overflows there even though there's no intakes attached to it. So that's that last few percent that we have to go through and actually tackle the private side of it, which we haven't done yet.
And that just goes into the lagoon, right?
Yes.
So the level of the lagoon is handled by the city wherever they have.
Yep, so that's, that big pump station, the pump station next to the beach controls the level of the lagoon. So we can either go by gravity, now the river's low, the river gets too high, we'll switch to pump mode, but that can control the levels of the lagoon. We kind of treat the lagoon almost like a detention basin, and, yeah, the water flow there, we can convey it to the river eventually.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions since this is a public hearing? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
We didn't talk about the project, Kojak. We just did this.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Well, we have three resolutions, so I'm not sure which one you want me to talk. You want me to talk before all three of them?
Yeah.
Okay, so this first one here is approving the plans specs and form of contracts for the Blake's Branch sewer. So we kind of talked about the plans. I wish I had the drone flight here, and it kind of went street by street showing you where we're going, but I can kind of explain it. So we're starting just north of Forest Street, and it'll go, like you said, north from there, kind of follows next to the tennis courts, then goes up to Meadow, and then over by Norris Street, and eventually where Norris and Jefferson Street tie together, that's where this project stops. And then we're going to replace almost all of Center Street between Jefferson and Iowa Avenue, I guess turns into Elm Street there, but anyway, and Grant Street as well, almost all that's being replaced. Several north-south streets are being replaced in the area too, but when we're done, everything between Jefferson, Iowa Avenue, Elm Street, Morel Drive, and they can change to a little bit in there as well, and then from north of Forest Street, we'll all be separated out. Do you remember how many acres that is? Sixty?
No, more than that, a hundred and some, it would be.
Okay, so it's going to separate a hundred and some acres altogether. Estimated construction cost was four point five million dollars. The plans and specs are in file at the city clerk's office, and I set a presentation providing overview of the project was given here. So I'll explain the bids we got on the next resolution, which is to award the contract. This is just to approve the plans and specs. This is a little bit different too, because the attorneys have to approve all this for the SRF loan, so all the, all the resolutions are different to what you used to as well because it's their format and their wording on these. So this kind of what, not what you're used to.
Okay, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirty-five, twenty twenty-four, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Blake's Branch sewer separation Phase Eight Division Three project. Recommendation passed and adopted, resolution number two thirty-five, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirty-six, twenty twenty-four, making a word of construction contract for the Blake's Branch sewer separation Phase Eight Division Three project. Recommendation passed and adopted, resolution number two thirty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Chris will take the roll. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Burkmeyer.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So again, this project separates storm and sanitary sewers, the general area of Center Avenue, Grant Street, Norris Street, between Jefferson and Morel Drive. Fifty-one contractors took out plans. Those weren't all prime contractors, there are some subcontractors there as well, probably mostly subcontractors. We received and opened the bids on September twenty-fifth at two P M. Four people bid, the lowest responsible bidder was Portson Construction in Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of fourteen million, seven hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and zero cents. The bid tab, letter of recommendation for the engineers and the plant owners list were attached in your agenda packet. Total funding for SRF is sixteen million dollars what we applied for, and I said the estimate was fourteen point five, so we're right at the estimate, then a couple hundred thousand.
Council, have any questions for Philip? Phil made a comment, responsible bidders, were there people that bid that weren't responsible?
No, there was no here, so it's very rare we have a bid thrown out for a reason.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council?
How likely will it be that they're able to maintain their bid quota, or will there be overruns that cause it to go up?
We've already identified some savings from the bid. We had some directionally drilled pipe that I think we're going to open cut instead. I would say it depends. I mean, there's always unknowns, especially now, because we've ran into rock several times, and if we get close to some of these cliff banks and the rock gets higher than what we think, there could be change orders that way, but I think we have a good idea once underground, so there's not going to be any huge surprises, but it should stay fairly close to what we have.
We have a little bit more, on this, I'm seeing that we have about funding of sixteen million, though, is that in case there are those overages?
Yeah, we, so the loan is up to sixteen million, which means that if there is overages, yes, we can borrow up to that amount.
And correct me wrong, but you don't draw sixteen million dollars to have it sit in your bank account?
Yeah.
You draw the money out as you spend it, so if we don't spend this much, we're not going to take out a loan for more than what it costs to the project.
Any other questions from council? Do you ever sleep at night?
Not lately. Not here, guys, this fall, though.
So Portson's done a lot of other work, as well, so they are.
They did, they did a downtown streetscape project a few years ago. They've done sewer separation for us before, so they had it done several private work.
Easy to work with.
They're a good contractor, yes.
Any other questions or comments from council? No, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four, approving construction contract and bond for the construction of the Blake's Branch sewer separation Phase Eight Division Three project. Recommendation passed and adopted, resolution number two thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Approve the recommendation.
Second. Kenny, Philip?
Again, same project, this is just the contractors signed the contract and provided us this insurance and bond, and we give them permission to the mayor to sign the same bottom as well.
Any questions from council? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have no ordinances tonight, so we'll move on to the recommendations.
Anti-harassment policy for City of Etamla employees. Recommendation, recent presentation with review and comment on draft version of anti-harassment policy for City of Etamla employees.
Okay, Barb Coats, you're out.
Thank you, sir. So this is, one of the things that HR does is we often take a look at our policies and identify different things that need to be updated. With a lot of the things that have been going on in our world, the EEOC, which is the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, released some guidelines earlier this year regarding harassment and discrimination cases pertaining to LGBTQ plus, utilizing people's pronouns, the Pregnancy Fair Act that came about, different things regarding hairstyles and different things like that, that they have actually put as a protected class. So one of the things that they have recommended was to take a look at what your company's harassment policies are. So one of the things that we did was we took a look at what we currently had in our personnel policy, and you have a copy of that, I believe. It starts on Article fifteen. That is our current harassment policy that is in our personnel policy, and you can see that the majority of what is in there relates to sexual harassment. There's not a lot of talk about whether it's discrimination on a protected class, if there is a concern, how an employee would report that, what that procedure or anything like that is. So one of the things that we did is taking a look at the EEOC guidelines that they had put out, some of the new laws with the Pregnancy Fairness Act, with some of the different things as far as being all the different protected classes. So we worked with our legal department and actually came up with the anti-harassment policy that you have there in front of you. This is in draft form right now. One of the things that we did was last week during one of our meetings, we actually had a presentation from Gaila Harrison, who is a local attorney. She does our annual DOT training. She also did a one-hour training with all of our supervisors on harassment, and that includes discrimination, any type of harassment whatsoever. She talked a lot about that. So what we are planning to do is we would like to implement this policy, this as an anti-harassment policy, we would update what is in our personnel procedure to just kind of give a basis of, you know, we will not tolerate any discrimination or harassment based on any protected class, and then refer back to this policy itself. So the personnel policy might shrink just a little bit, but the intent of it is to give a very specific, you know, that we will not accept any of this and retaliation, we don't, do not accept any retaliation either, zero tolerance policy for that. This information was also presented to our supervisors, given to all of them as a request for any feedback on this policy. I received about three or four different responses that have said, policy looks good, they didn't have any concerns or any questions on it. Moving forward, this is going to be something that we are going to work through with our staff on an annual basis, is to continue to talk about harassment and discrimination and retaliation. There is different training that we have available through NeoGov that we will be able to do annually with all of our employees. We initially focused on our supervisors, since our supervisors are kind of that first line of defense, and they're going to be the ones that, they may take some reports if an employee comes to them, and that way they have an understanding of what they need to do as well and what their responsibility is. So the intent tonight is to bring this to you, for you to take a look at it, and for if there is any feedback or anything that you all have regarding this policy, and then we will work to make any changes, work with our legal department, and we'll bring this back to you at our next meeting for adoption.
I thought it was very well-written, and it was very thorough, so I appreciate that. Does Kathy have any questions or comments for Barb?
I would just echo that at the beginning, especially the process to how to report a complaint and the protections too. I think that that's laid out nicely, and I think that's very important for people to know what that looks like.
Thank you.
We have a large number of protected classes.
Protected classes could be a number of anything. You have age, sex, oh gosh, I can't even remember all of them because there's so many of them, but it's age, religion, disability, status, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, genetic information, marital status, you name it, I think any one of us probably fall into some type of protected class at some point in time.
And because of that point, that's why I see the long part of a very detailed policy.
Correct. Well, in that way, to kind of Carrie's point, is we have a very specific process of what that looks like, you know, what we would do, and within HR, you know, we have a very specific investigation process as well that we go through, and if it were something that would come, you know, outside of our purview, it would then go to our legal team, so.
Well done. Any other comments from council? We're not going to prove this tonight, correct?
Correct.
You just wanted feedback.
Yep, if there is any feedback, that's where we put it out there, and like I said, we send it to all staff to get their feedback to, give them a chance. We talked about it at our employee advisory group. We also talked about it at our supervisor meeting this last Thursday, asking for that feedback, really trying to get that from our staff. And so my intent will be, if there are no changes to be made, I will bring this to you in next meeting for approval.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Planning Department Policy Number One dash twenty twenty-four, recommendation approved Planning Department Policy One dash twenty twenty-four, a policy concerning courtesy notices for variances, conditional use permits, and rezonings.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Oh.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to Oprah.
Second.
Thank you.
That's what happens when it runs on to the next page. Okay, Zach, now it's your turn.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. During the rezoning of ten fourteen North Elm, some of the neighbors raised some concerns about the policy that we have around courtesy notices, and they asked for some revisions. The council asked staff to go back and look at those with the Planned Zoning Commission, and over the last couple Planned Zoning Commission meetings, we were able to put together a written policy here that we wanted to recommend for the council. This policy would apply to any applications for variance, conditional use permit, or rezoning. The code allows someone to apply for a variance application or rezoning for projects, whether they're very likely to be approved or not, people have the right to always apply for it. And so if somebody wanted to try to get their house rezoned to be a slaughterhouse, if they want to pay the fee, they get the right to the hearing. So that's kind of where this would apply. We used to send courtesy notices for those issues to property owners within two hundred feet, and we required a sign to be posted at the applicant's property. The issues that were raised were first that we didn't send those courtesy notices to all the owners in a condominium complex. We only had one address sometimes, that was for the condo board or whoever received mail from the association. We found a way to address that. We will send notices, we're going to have the county assessor's office help us get those. We're able to find out from them what the horizontal property regimes are, and then we can get from the tax information who to send those notices to. So that's going to be one of the changes in the policy. So that's going to be one of the changes in the policy. Also raised was a concern that two hundred feet was not a wide enough radius for the courtesy notices. Working with Planned Zoning Commission, we have settled on five hundred feet. It's been a good compromise distance there. That will increase the cost of this. We're gonna have to spend quite a bit more on postage. You know, we're talking about about a hundred dollars or more for each of these issues. So there is a resolution later in the meeting to look at fees for these. And with that resolution, you'll see a table will show how big the change will be in the number of courtesy notices that go out. Because, you know, good tip when you order pizza, when something's circular, if you increase the size by fifty percent of the diameter, you actually increase the area by a lot more than fifty percent. So it's a base for quite a few more notices, and that's a good thing. There'll be more people to get them. Also coming up in the meeting that didn't come up in the council meeting was the time when we sent the notices out. There was some of the neighbors that were present at the meeting that wanted to try to get as much lead time as possible for those notices. So we looked at requiring, and we agreed to send the notices at least seven business days prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Almost all these items will have a planning zoning commission recommendation, and then a public hearing of zoning board adjustment or a public hearing at the city council. Variances are the only item that only has the public hearing zoning board adjustment. But whatever the first public meeting is, we'll send the notice seven business days prior to the first public meeting, even if that's not the first public hearing. So that was something that we were able to get figured out there. We do anticipate a little bit of disruption at first because that's gonna add to the amount of lead time we have to get for an application or else we'll have to wait for the next month's meeting. So that's gonna be a little pressure on us to communicate with applicants for their projects. You know, we can't receive this four days before planning zoning anymore. We have to receive it at least seven business days before planning zoning, realistically eight or nine, so we can put the notice together and get it out to a man. But we're gonna be able to handle that. And then they also raised an issue about the signs that we use being too small. We did go out and do some price checking. We're gonna be able to order some larger signs if this is approved. Our recommendation is to still use the sign that we had before for residential variances, conditional use permits, where the lot is only seventy feet wide or less. A lot of those are gonna be not as significant issues. That'll allow us to go through the inventory of signs we have and allow us to not use a lot of money. But where we are going to have a bigger, bigger issue of rezoning or anything related to commercial, we'll order a larger sign with at least four-inch letter height to advertise the hearing. And so I think that'll help us to address those issues as well. Wanted to thank the folks that participated in this Planning and Zoning Commission, really took this seriously. And then we had a lot of neighbors and community involvement that wanted to be invested in making this policy better. So in general, I think this is a good change and something that we've got a good handle on getting done.
I just want to thank you for the work that the Planning and Zoning Commission did because I believe you did address every one of those citizen concerns. I know it was a lot of work for you and the commission, but I do think this makes for a better, more seamless process of notifications. So I really appreciate the hard work that you and the commission have put into doing these changes.
Thank you. Yeah, there was one other issue that wasn't addressed in the policy, and that's that they were hoping that public hearing notices could be put on social media. It was kind of looking at our department. We thought that that was better addressed by the council for citywide related to all public hearings. And so that's kind of pushing that back to the council, what you want to do with that part of it. But for department-specific and these notices that are specific to market, we do have a pretty good idea how to go forward on that.
I agree with the mayor. I think he does it done well.
Thank you, and I appreciate you were at the meeting there and you were able to see what folks were saying. And I, and I think they had a lot of, a lot of good intent, a lot of good points, and I'm glad we were able to get those resolved.
You're better.
I think this also highlights like the importance of community involvement too because I guess we, as a city, can put things out and not truly maybe know the impact. We think we're, we have a great policy and until people say, hey, this may be working better or something like that, then we don't always know. So I think it really highlights the importance of that community involvement to ensure that our policies run and work for everyone when they can, understanding that that's not always an option. But I appreciate it, Ben.
Thank you.
Any other comments for Zach? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Purchased case SR one seventy-five B Skid steer from recycling center. Recommendation, approved the purchase of Skid steer from grinder implement for thirty-five thousand dollars after trade-in credit for the recycling center.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. At the September Solid Waste Commission meeting, the commission recommended purchasing the Skid steer from grinder implement for thirty-five thousand dollars after trade-in. There was budgeted forty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars for this item. The current Skid steer is generally operational, but requires three thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars for new tires and has reached the end of its scheduled service. Looking at the value we can get on the trade right now, it looked like the right time to make the decision to purchase the new one. And so that was something the Solid Waste Commission agreed with. We solicited bids and received three bids. There's a tab for the bids attached. One thing the mayor pointed out to me that isn't really clear on how it's spelled out here. They list the trade-in price on each of those, and it gets a little confusing. That's the price for the equipment they proposed after trade-in. So thirty-five thousand dollars from grinder implements for the case is the lowest total equipment price after trade-in. Their original price is fifty-six thousand, but they gave us the best trade value, so the purchase price would be thirty-five thousand.
And then what has been determined what the replacement schedule would be for this item in the future?
So looking at this piece of equipment in general, it's probably gonna last another five years, but we'll, you know, as it gets closer to the end, we'll be looking at maintenance and what's gone into it, and we'll see whether there's an opportunity to push it a little bit further. We definitely want to get more time out of equipment when we can. In this case, the tire replacement and that cost lined up to where it didn't make sense for us to push it out one more year. It was the right time with the trade value, the maintenance cost.
Okay, thank you.
It's an everyday use, almost constant use.
Yeah. Especially out there, it's the most common use, even up there with the four-horse.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to resolutions now.
Resolution number two twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Kirk and Michael and Associates Incorporated for survey, design, bid, construction, and close-up phases for the T-Hanger project at the Atomo Regional Airport. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
No, the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, JD.
Thank you. This contract will cover the whole process of the T-Hanger project, from what they've already started with the survey and the design. And we did work and everything cleared through the end for, as far as even receiving our money back from the I V D O T and the FAA for the funding that we've put into this. The FAA requires independent fee estimate and I F P, which is prior to the project, you have to have this done to make sure that your consultant is giving you a fair price for the process or the job that they're doing for you. We've had that done. The I F P come back at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Kirk and Michael was three hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety cents, which is six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents less, or two percent. This, the FAA does allow us a ten percent overrun, which we are two percent under, so that is a good sign on whether they're charging us, and this is acceptable with the FAA.
Council, have any questions for JD?
JD, we have people standing in line to rent that when it's completed?
It had sold out yesterday.
Really? Wonderful.
Yes.
Aren't we building a bigger?
I'm just kidding. No, we're gonna bid a four and a six place. We're gonna bid a four place, and that is, we want a six place is what we want. And if one of the bids come back and it's not feasible, then we'll just have to go with four, but we are looking to get a six.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
So where are you going with the T-hangers instead of the box hangers, so you can get four of them in?
Right, you get more bang for your buck. I mean, the most expensive part of it is the door system. So I mean, just the operator itself, not even considering the construction of the door, but just the door operator itself, with the motors and the pulleys and the hanging system. You're looking at twenty thousand dollars just in the operator side of it, and that's not even including the structure of the doors. So her door, her door. If you want to give us enough money, you'd like to double that and build twelve, we would definitely do that. There it is, hand down. Sounds like a clause you are.
The people who are gonna go in there then are in the big hangar right now, probably.
There's, there's some that's in there, and there's some that's in other airports that want to come to Atomo. Some of them was originally in Atomo. One guy's bought an aircraft. He didn't want to keep it in a community hangar and take a chance of getting a scratch possibly or something, so he moved to another community. But he is waiting to move back.
And another problem with the big hangar is if you get several planes in there and you happen to be in the back, you show up on an evening because you want to do some night flight or whatever, you can't, can't get it.
Well, and we tell everyone, I mean, if you call us and let us know that day, we will get you to the front. We had a gentleman that tonight, he decided he's either gonna fly home late tonight or first thing tomorrow morning. So he called over this afternoon, and when I left today, it was square in front of the hangar. So whether he goes tonight or first thing tomorrow morning, he's ready to go.
That's good service.
I agree.
Yes. Indian Hills does a lot of night flights, so we always keep them to the front or what the best we can do to get them close out, so.
Any other questions, comments from council? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, approving a contract with Revise LLC for the development, redesign, and hosting of a custom municipal website for forty-four thousand, six hundred dollars for the first year and six thousand, nine hundred dollars per year for subsequent years, with option of splitting up the initial price over the first three years. Recommendation, passing it off resolution number two twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Travis.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, I'm gonna talk to the council about why the City of Atomo needs to look at upgrading its web presence with a new website. So this desire originated with the Youth City Council and the Human Rights Commission. They were both wanting some updates onto our website, and I was having some troubles making it look good or functioning great. So I decided to find out what's more normal, what's out there. I contacted Civic Plus and Global Reach was actually kind of a random meeting that I had. But Global Reach is a big, bigger company in the game. They had federal contracts, state contracts, actually do Casey's and Fairway as well. And after the, or during the meetings, I made sure they knew they were not trying to sell me. I needed information so I could bring to the council. And it was actually after one of these meetings that I, I found out something new about our website. We're not currently ADA compliant to new Justice Department standards. I will fully agree, it looks weird just coming from Global Reach, a company that would like to sell us a website, giving us information of why we need to get a new website. However, they did tell me this was from a third party. And considering I know one of the new requirements is having tags for all the images and that none of our images on our website have those tags, I would believe this number of seven hundred and twenty-six items to be correct. More than a quarter of the adults in the U.S. have some sort of disability. Much like accommodating for physical disabilities, we need to accommodate for those disabilities that might be a little harder to see. The minimum compliance requirement is WCAG two point one double A. I saw online that's commonly referred to as WCAG. I don't like that, some call it WCAG. The Justice Department in April twenty-fourth of this year made the ruling that all state local government websites had to have this, this level of compliance. The fines can be quite large, as I found out from the Justice Department. For non-compliance, the first fine can be up to ninety-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars, and subsequent ones can be up to a hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. These types of lawsuits are actually on the rise. The four main states are New York, California, Florida, and Pennsylvania. Between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, those actually saw a little bit of decline. But all other states saw a rise of over seventy-five percent between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Knowing this would cost money, I have that concern. But I was prepared to just deal with what we had. However, when I found out that this new ADA rules, I figured that now was the time to actually act because there is a timeline associated with these requirements. It's twenty twenty-six, or April twenty twenty-six for communities larger than fifty thousand. And then for communities smaller than fifty thousand is April of twenty twenty-seven. It takes time to make a website, though, so. And a lot of other communities are gonna be popping on this needing to act as well. So I figured an RFP should go out. After getting some assistance with making an RFP, I sent one out, and it was sent out on August thirtieth of this year. We sent it to Neo-Baldum Labs, our current provider, Hills Production, Revise, Civic Plus, Global Reach, and De novo, along with being posted to our website. The RFP closed on September twentieth, and we received eight proposals. These were from Revise, Civic Plus, Global Reach, De novo, V-Tech Solutions Incorporated, J I L Ventures, Tech Hoops, and Nation Media. A team consisting of myself, city administrator Wrath, the IT department, city clerk Zach Simonson, and Katie King, who was previously the person that did most of the work on the website. We got together and reviewed the proposals. They were scored in eight categories, including proposal response, the assistance availability, or tech support, additional features, end product ease of use, backend ease of use, cost, the reputation qualifications of the company, and the proposed timeline. Discussion was had toward the end if we wanted another presentation from maybe the top two companies. However, it was clear that we wanted Revise as our, our new partner on this. Revise has many, many, many municipal websites under its spell. They've actually been around for about twenty-nine years. They even have tools to make sure that our site will remain ADA compliant as we go along. I've communicated with multiple references for Revise. Two of them have been with them for over a decade. Never a problem with them at all. A third was a newer customer, that was Esther Belai. And they were very happy with the process they had just gone through. And as an idea of the tools that will be available to us that we don't have to contact them about, their website's not currently fleshed out. The person I talked to actually wanted to do a lot more work with it. But it wasn't Revise's problem, it was their problem. They just didn't have the staff, they're a smaller community. But they have all the tools they need to create their robust website. Now the not as fun part. So the first year fee is forty-four thousand, six hundred dollars, and that includes the annual fee of six thousand, nine hundred dollars. They do include the option to spread out that initial project cost over the first three years. And you can see that kind of breaks down to just shy of twenty thousand per year. They, we judge the cost for the website under an initial plus-five scenario. So the initial cost, the plus-five would be annual fees or whatever you want to call them. Revise was not the bottom on that, they were third up. However, they have the cheapest annual fee, so they do eventually become the cheapest option for the city. For a timeline on this, if we started in November, we're looking somewhere between March and May for a website launch. And interesting part would be that might correspond with City Hall opening back up, so it'd be kind of a double whammy if you want. This new website comes with tools that will increase transparency with citizens by being able to send out email alerts and text alerts for items like agenda postings, road closures, and newsletters, just generic newsletters from the city. Also, for boards and commissions meetings, there will be less of a confusion about when those are and where they are. I've looked at a bunch of the city websites. You can choose the meeting, and it pops up on a map exactly where it is, and you'll know the time. I know that that was one of the items brought up with the property on Elm there where. they were concerned about not knowing when the meetings were and where they were. Uh, citizens will be able to make reservations for items like shelters and uh, sign up for swim lessons and be able to pay for those items on through the website. We're no longer gonna be in need to making sure somebody is down at the beach to go down there and see what's on their books. From my understanding is they they do it everything all on on paper now currently, right Gene?
That's correct.
So this will create a a digital system that anyone with access can pull up, see if it's reserved and then they can uh, work with our newer software, the financial software and pay for it online. Uh, also speaking of the beach, we will be bringing in the uh, the beach and the recycling center under the house of the city website. They have the exact same requirements that we do for ADA compliance, considering they are owned by the city. So we felt to keep it consistent with the look of the city and making sure they're meeting the those requirements, we're gonna go ahead and bring them in. Also a side note on that. With the groups like the U.S. City Council and the boards and commissions having their own pages, it's gonna be a lot easier showing the public what those groups do and hopefully bring in new people to those groups. Earlier this year, the uh, council have discussed, you know, what kind of term limits they might wanna put on those. Then we had the problem of, well, nobody new wants to come in. A new website will help educate the public and bring them in. Uh, I've talked about a lot of these benefits to the city. We're gonna be able to take more control over our website. Currently, if I wanna make some changes, I have to send an email off and I may or may not hear anything back. We'll have a better online presence for people wanting to move to the community or possible businesses that wanna move to the community. We will help maintain Asa Atumla as a regional hub. I actually got bored over the weekend and looked at all the or most of the websites in southeast Iowa. Something like this would guarantee us as a as the hub, at least in an online way. Well, Revise also has won multiple awards and they love promoting their websites to get those awards. So that's free promotion for the city of Atumla right there. So in the meantime, Neobaldson Labs has agreed to host our current site, so we have something up and running. Uh, we'll work with Revise to get a new site created. I will continue to capture pictures and video of the city. I've already started getting updated pictures and video. It never has to have something new and we're in the perfect time of the year for it with the the leaves changing. And we'll prepare for the uh, reintroduction of the city of Atumla, the worldwide web.
Any questions?
Where's the money coming from?
That is a great question. I think I will defer to Cole on this one.
We're still looking into that. I think the option of being able to split it, which I was aware of splitting it over the three years will make it easier.
Weren't they one of the few that even offered that option?
They're the only ones that uh, straight up offered it. Like I said, my my big worry on this is with so many communities that are gonna be needing to get their websites updated, the demand is gonna skyrocket with skyrocketing demand, you get increased prices. So if we start now, well, not only we will probably have a better price, uh, the project will take a reasonable timeline and we will be working with companies that know what they're doing. Half of the proposals we got were from companies that had never done a city website before. And one of them had only done one. So as we get through this process closer to the deadline, more cities are in dealing with these companies that have never done it before, that think they can do it, but are charging the same price.
You know, you talked to some of the cities in Iowa too, right?
Second.
You talked to some of the cities in Iowa that use Revise?
I did, I talked to Estorville that used Revise. I talked, I can't remember the exact cities in Iowa that I talked to, but Civic Plus. Civic Plus was our number two option, they came pretty close. They are definitely more expensive though. Generally speaking, they were seen as having a more cookie cutter look. And even the Civic Plus cities that I talked to had said that was something that they recognized. Uh, Revise is more comfortable with working closer with the city about creating more customized.
And Travis, our previous provider didn't even put in a.
Correct.
Correct. So when when we talk about a new website, um, you talk about the twenty thousand dollar spread over three years and it goes to seven thousand dollars. But I think when you and I sat down originally talked about this, there was a great savings to payroll as well, being able to reserve things online and being, you know, not tying up city staff's time. Um, also there were many legalities of a website, correct? There were, yeah, I mean, there's a legal way, not anybody can just set up the website. Normally that's the biggest benefit to this is the branding of the city. I know, and I know a lot of people do, when I go to a city I go on vacation, I go to their city website and I see what it's like. And it's kind of a depressing mood if you see kind of a uh, a a website that's not very exciting. So this actually leads us into the future. It may be a little bit more money in the beginning. It it's less money in the long run, it ties our staff up less and it it puts Atumla, you know, tells them we're open for business and sells our brand. So, you know, Travis, I want to commend you for putting this together. Also the groups uh, having the, we want people to join our boards. If we if we can have people see boards and meeting notes and be able to find applications online, we can also increase productivity from our citizens to get more information also. Um, I just want everybody to know I'm fully behind this and and I hope you are too.
The specific example for the money savings, the uh, the cemetery and park share a one clerk and doing being able to do items online will help free up her time so she can focus more on direct tasks associated with the cemetery or the the park system. As far as accessibility to the community and the uh, inclusion sense, with this new website, we can create multiple forms that are, you fill in online, it's not a PDF to download. This will let people use their browser to translate that page for those that prefer a language other than English. Submit everything, we'll see it in English on our side. If we have to throw some wording into a translator, that's no biggie. And then be able to help those people out more, even though there may be a bit of a language gap.
So I uh, I agree with Bill, I understand that the importance of this and I also understand getting ahead of this before other cities um, jump on with this and they're like, we need to do that with the price. My concern is we don't know where the money's coming from today when we're, when this is on the agenda. And so that is a concern to me because I, again, I'm all for this. I think that this is important, especially with all the items that you identified today. So I, okay, here comes Cole.
We we have talked about it and I think Cole, when he says there's some options.
Okay. That's what I'd like to hear.
So some of the, some of the different options that we have is that uh, because this is a citywide webpage, we can split it between different departments, which also means splitting it between different funds.
Okay.
Uh, so there's the ability to do that. Um, uh, there is some uh, excess in the uh, franchise fees that didn't get transferred over from the last fiscal year. So it's possible to to um, uh, bring some back into the general fund to help offset uh, some of this cost as well. So there is some options, we just haven't, we just haven't solidified exactly um, how we're going to do it. But there, the especially with splitting it, you know, um, uh, over the three years, that becomes a whole lot easier instead of finding, trying to find um, forty forty nine thousand dollars right off the bat. But um, there there is some options, I don't have any, I don't have any worries that we're gonna be able to um, finance the the um, the amount. And Cole, that's to finance the amount right now. We wait, then don't we get put at the end of the list with everybody jumping on and of course, because of demand, the price is gonna go up. And in the companies, a couple of companies tell you we could be two years out, which puts us out of compliance with our new.
If we go beyond twenty twenty seven, that we will be out of compliance. Cole, does that uh, divisible three dollar amount include each annual fee as well?
Yeah, so so um, uh, what I did was I took Travis's number of the, and he did it already. Um, but what it is, is you take the the thirty seventh, uh, thirty seven seven, divide that by three and then you add in sixty nine hundred each time and you come up with that nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty six dollars and sixty seven cents.
Per year.
Per, per year for the first three years. Per, per year for the first three years and then it goes to the sixty nine hundred.
Travis, someone was, really that would explain.
Sure, Cole did that for me. Yeah. Did you tell me it includes the redesign every four years? We can rebrand every.
Correct, that includes a, this contract includes a website redesigned every four years. No extra cost, it's built in. So every four years, if the city of Atumla wants a solid refresh on its look, we can get a solid refresh on our look.
That, and and considering what it costs to right now do this upfront, um, and and as Travis said, some of those other uh, companies that have not done a city uh, website are probably not gonna offer that. So if we wanna rebrand in forty years, we're gonna pay that forty six thousand or more, um, again.
Can people also submit comments to like agenda items and uh, or like planning and zoning things like that online?
From what I've seen, they would not have that ability, but there's nothing that would stop people from emailing us with those concerns. One of the items I did see on there would be the ability to put polls up on our site and give information. The op, there is an option on there for a person like the city administrator to be able to basically put, you know, the city administrator's message, whatever you wanna call it, Phil's corner. Um, and uh, receive comments on there. That's one of the things you could turn off and on with comments, I guess it depends on how much you want to hear that day.
Uh, so the the point with cost is, I know Cole has mentioned in December, I think it was, we're looking at doing a um, budget amendment. Uh, this would be incorporated into that, so it would be finalized as to how the the funds would be for that. If it's franchise fees coming over or split between different departments, we'd have that laid out as part of that budget amendment if it's approved tonight.
Right.
I think the other thing the council needs to remember, you get one ADA noncompliance, it costs you twice as much as it does to get a house for one year. And then you have to do it anyway.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Paul, for coming out, I appreciate that because I think it's important for not only us to understand, but the community to understand you about the financial aspect of it.
I completely understand that one and I'm glad I now will know a little bit more about it too. It has been discussed, I can't tell you that.
I was really hoping there was gonna be a a maintenance fair and miscellaneous in the budget there that we could pull something down or.
I would love to have a contingency fund, um, it just isn't there right now. But um, like I said, with twenty thousand is a lot easier by than than the forty four. Uh, and if we split it between um, uh, the various departments, i- it it softens that ball a whole lot, so.
Any other questions for Travis from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, looking.
Just a question on, on the form of contracts, do we have a a copy available? Or are we just looking at the the bid response?
Yeah. Uh, Christine Stone did review an agreement and has uh, suggested some revisions which were approved by the the company.
Okay, great, thanks, Bill.
Kids, there's no other questions for Travis, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Resolution number two thirty one, twenty twenty four, establishing fees for planning and development services in the city of Atumla, Iowa and rescinding resolution number fifty four, twenty twenty three. Recommendation passing it off resolution number two thirty one, twenty twenty four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So, ma'am.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Um, the code establishes the uh, council has the authority by resolution to set fees for planning department services. Uh, those fees include things like the application fee for rezonings, variances, conditional use permits. For those items, uh, the application fee has to be paid whether or not it's approved. It's a little bit different for the building permit where we might review it and we might back out of the project or it might get denied. You only have to pay for a building that you actually built. If you wanna apply for a variance, even if you don't get the variance, you have to pay the fee. Uh, because the fee is meant to accomplish recovering costs that we actually spend. Um, and so uh, we'll be changing those fees because the policy of uh, sending more courtesy notices and having a larger sign is gonna increase our costs a little bit on doing that. We did provide a table in there that shows uh, the number of letters that would be sent at different uh, buffer areas for um, uh, courtesy notices and that number goes up. Uh, for example, uh, what I pulled was the last ten that we did. I didn't include the ones that were on any boundaries with the city limits because it was a little unclear whether we would send notices in or outside of city limits. We will send them outside of city limits, that was set by the policy, but that wasn't clear when we did this. Um, but generally will increase by seventy five to a hundred. Uh, the ten fourteen North Elm, the most recent we did is actually the largest difference. We only sent twenty five letters in a two hundred foot radius, but in five hundred foot radius, we would have sent a hundred and fifty nine letters. So that's a um, obviously more expensive at the current cost of postage. Uh, that was a difference between eighteen dollars and twenty five cents and a hundred and sixteen dollars and seven cents. So uh, we're gonna propose to raise all the fees for those items, rezonings, variances and conditional use permits by hundred dollars. That'll balance out generally between the the cost of the new sign and the cost of the additional postage.
Council, have any questions for Zach?
When was the last time any of those fees were changed? It's been a while, hasn't it?
Um, it hasn't been all that long, so we're gonna be rescinding a resolution from twenty twenty three. Um, that resolution, I don't think we raised any of those items, uh, but we did raise expense permits. So we have revised this resolution pretty recently, but I think it's probably been three or four years at least since we actually raised. And it would have been at that time, I think it was just the uh, rezoning and conditional use permits that went up from one fifty or two hundred to three hundred, two hundred respectively, but uh, they they haven't said that for a while.
Kids, there's no other questions for Zach, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Resolution number two thirty three, twenty twenty four, affirming the city of Atumla's commitment to option number three of the two thousand nineteen Iowa DOT's concept of reconstruction of US thirty four from Wildwood Drive to West Junction, US sixty three. Recommendation passing it off resolution number two thirty three, twenty twenty four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Who's the recommendation?
Second.
Okay, Phil, I think you're gonna take this.
Uh, yes, uh, so the, uh, this is actually something that's been in the works uh, for a number of years. And uh, just to lay the the background here, uh, this is not a product that's going to happen uh, next year or or even probably the next couple of years. In fact, it's not even in the state's five year plan at this moment. Uh, this is uh, an attempt to hopefully get it into the five year plan. Uh, I received a call of about a week and a half ago uh, from a regional DOT representative that informed me that the state was considering pulling or not funding this project and not including it in their future five year plan, which would actually be, I think, next year's plan for the five years following. And uh, so we're talking about the project will be twenty thirty, twenty thirty one at the earliest. But the first step is to get it into the five year plan of the uh, Department of Transportation. So the city was approached uh, back in, I think it was twenty nineteen is the earliest I saw where there was a public information meeting, uh, a number of staff members, uh, former mayor Lazio and I believe Councilman Bob Myers were representatives there, uh, along with a couple of staff members uh, and talked about the the project and there was three options which uh, were included as as part of this package. The talk at the time, um, and the city had confirmed uh, that we were in agreement with. Basically, what the DOT wanted to do was eliminate the overpasses or bridges, as they call them, and bring everything down to grade along thirty four, uh, in order to do that, putting in roundabouts um, for that project. Uh, and so that was something that was talked about at that time. Since I arrived here, it had been talked about at least a couple of other times. Uh, and um, had gone to regional meetings on two occasions now, talking about the project and um, shared support for the project uh, from the city perspective. Uh, so I was a little surprised to get the call, uh, like you mentioned, about a week and a half ago, saying that there was concern that the city was not committed to the project. So I wasn't sure what exactly we needed to do to share commitment uh, and thought uh, maybe passing a resolution of. and thought maybe passing a resolution officially might be a sense to the Department of Transportation that we are on board with this. Since putting this out on the agenda, I did receive a call from Tim Albert with Water Works. He had some concerns he shared about the water infrastructure in the area along here and the costs that might be associated with that. As I told him, I talked to him today. This isn't a project that we're, it's not on the horizon. The final design has not been drafted. I don't even know at this point what year this project would happen. It may not even, with this, if council decides to approve this resolution, may still not receive entrance into the five-year plan for the DOT. But doing nothing will guarantee that we will not have it funded or put into the five-year plan. So I'm presenting this before council for consideration and official action to let the DOT know that we'd be supportive of them rehabbing and reconstructing this section of US thirty-four at such time as they would do that.
Council, have any questions for Phil?
I heard you say that the state was talking about possibly supporting this financially. And what does that mean? And as you mentioned, Tim Albert of the Water Works wanted to know who was going to pay for the water redistribution. He estimates that could be a two-million-dollar hit for the Water Works to accomplish that. So those are all the things that I'm concerned about. And if the state's going to get in and pay for it, y'all come on down now.
Well, I mean, they pay for the parts of the infrastructure that would be particular to this, the roadwork and that. Right away, they would need purchase as far as for the roundabouts. There are programs available to assist with funding of utilities, but that is not the state's priority.
When you talk about roundabouts, this is talking about Highway thirty-four from Wildwood Drive to the West Junction, US sixty-three. I don't know where the West Junction is, but if we're going to do roundabouts at every intersection, I can't believe that.
Yeah, it's the primary intersections where there is now an overpass that will drop that to grade and put in. So instead of an overpass, because of the amount of traffic, it would put in a roundabout. So I'm going to say it's about five roundabouts.
Really?
Yeah.
Maybe two lane roundabouts too. So we're talking about the Church Street, Madison Avenue area, south of the Bridgeview. And we're talking about the overpass, which goes over our walkway by John Deere. And where else?
Yeah, so it looks like on Vine Street, Church Street, and Jefferson Street. It's kind of like a figure eight, I think they call it. Wapoel Street and Quincy Avenue. Yeah, there was a map in there. The option three shows where those roundabouts would go. Or a depiction, I should say.
Well, my opinion is at this point, we need more information and where the money would come from. And if we can support the Water Works for the estimated two-million-dollar hit it would take from them, I just guess I'm not ready to bull on this tonight, no matter what the state says.
Can someone help me understand when we're talking about Tim Albert's concerns, what is meant by water redistribution?
Some of the water lines along Wapoel Drive, I think, have to be relocated when they do the driveway.
Well, and even the ones between Church Street and Madison Avenue, that all requires replacement. If we're going to take that bridge out, overpass out, and put in a roundabout, that takes redistribution of water. It's not just a simple, here's a cup of water and have a nice drink.
Well, I didn't think that. I was just asking for clarification.
Well, I was trying to give you my clarification.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four, approving the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Magnum Patcher from Road Doctors in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars for the Streets Department. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number two thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Let's go approve.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. So this Craco Patcher, which is item number twenty-six, quick number twenty-six, was purchased in July of two thousand eight. An evaluation in twenty eighteen was to replace it. Before it could be replaced, the motor went out. So we replaced the motor instead and kept the machine. We intended to include it on next year's capital item budget. But as we're calling around for estimates, one of the manufacturers had a machine in his showroom that was ordered and the people that ordered it decided they didn't want anymore. So it was already built, sitting there on his, on his lot, and he offered it for a significant discount. So I guess just a step back. We evaluated it in September, and it recommended repairs of twenty-seven, twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. And that evaluation is included in your packet. So after that evaluation is when we decided to include it in next year's capital plan and went out for bids. So you can see that the engine is again starting to use oil. They don't think it's going to last too much longer. Brakes are off the trailer, the tires are starting to get a little bit thin. This particular model has an auger that feeds from the hopper in the back towards the front to auger the rock into the hose. That's running out. And then the hydraulic motor is getting weak and it's shutting down. It's not, it's losing pressure. So that was why we recommended replacing it next year. So anyway, now that we found out that one of the manufacturers had a, had a machine on his lot and was offering a significant discount, we went out for two other bids, trying to get three bids to see what were the comparables. The Road Doctor for sixty-eight thousand dollars was the lowest bid. This is the one that was on the lot. If we would wait till next year to buy it, their list price for next year is a hundred and nine thousand. It's about a forty percent discount. The second lowest bid was for seventy-seven thousand seven hundred dollars from Total Patcher, but we didn't feel that was as good a quality as what we have now. This one's gravity fed. So we got to have someone back there at the, basically at the back of the truck, making sure that the rock keeps flowing. Rocket's too many and sticky, doesn't always flow out of the truck. And also it hangs off a chain, which the guys didn't like. The one we have now is, has an articulating arm. So you're not actually holding or pushing anything, it just swings on that arm. It's a lot less user fatigue. A more comparable equipment that's on, that was for sale now, was from Star Equipment. That was ninety-three thousand dollars. So what we feel is a more comparable item is about twenty-five thousand dollars more than what the little bid was. Again, we recommend that the council approve this. It was a budget for this year. I talked to Cole. We have a fund balance in three-ten, which is the equipment fund that we can purchase this out of. Any other questions?
When you talk about transferring rock, is this an asphalt machine?
It's a.
What is?
It's a rocks, we call it rocks better. The DOT uses these almost exclusively. So when the weather is warm, you know what a chip seal is?
What, a what?
A chip seal. So when you spray the asphalt emulsion on the pavement and they put key gravel over it, roll it in. It's the same products, same technology, but it's used to fix potholes instead of coating the whole entire road surface. So you put a tack coat down, then you push this lever and it mixes up the asphalt with the rock. That fills in the, it fills in the pothole or the deteriorated part of the street. And then you put clean rock on top of that and they'll sweep it over and cover it up. And eventually it'll, it'll harden into like a, basically a seal coat. And it works really well in warm weather. And it works really well for like joint deterioration or like kind of rough spots and shallow potholes. A lot of the big deep potholes, you can fill with the pre-mix and tamp that and then it'll hold. But a lot of these shallow ones that have like tapered edges on them, it's just too thin, it won't hold. So this is what we use for a lot of those other, like the thinner, bigger potholes or like the, a bad area of street and cover up a larger area.
No, years ago, the city bought an asphalt laying machine, single lane. Do we still have that?
No.
Get rid of it.
We hadn't used it since twenty thirteen.
Right.
So.
And it was because we didn't have people that could operate it. I understand.
Yeah, and honestly, the price we could pay for asphalt, like just the raw asphalt to lay ourselves, wasn't much different than what we were charged to have someone lay it for us. So just, it didn't make any sense to pay our guys to lay more expensive asphalt than we could pay the contractor to do it. We have one other thing. We do intend to keep the old machine and basically run it till it dies. And we'll have a second crew running. When it is running, if we do have to replace something on it, if it's small, we can be down for a while running the new machine. And then if the old machine is still running, we have a second crew available, run both machines at the same time.
Does the new machine come with a warranty of any kind?
I didn't ask. Is it on the?
Two, two year.
Does it say on there?
Two, two thousand dollars.
Say that again.
Two years or two thousand dollars?
Okay.
Oh, that's just on the end. Yeah, the five-year.
So this piece of machine probably gets a lot of heavy use and it's lasted you sixteen years, so.
Yeah, the machine we're getting is the same, the modern, same model. It's not the same machine because they, like a twenty, two thousand eight car, but same as a twenty, twenty-four car. It's the same model, just a, the modern version of it.
Yeah, the repairs it's needed, it's almost a third of what a new one would cost you.
Right.
Any reason why the original first customer declined it?
Don't know.
They ran out of money.
Has anybody seen it?
Have we actually seen it?
Yeah, we got pictures of it. I have them in my office. Should have included them, but we asked for pictures of it sitting on their floor. We saw pictures of it, so it's, it's there.
So, oh, I'm sorry. No, you're right again.
So if we're taking this out of the three-ten fund, is there something else we're not going to be able to purchase in the future? Something else we budgeted for that we will?
Fund balance left over. Sitting there, we did not spend this year, so.
You can just write your book.
No, right now, the three-ten fund has a balance. That balance has been built up over the years and there is a effort to draw that down and use it to purchase equipment. It will not affect any future purchases simply because right now that money is unallocated to anything else.
Perfect, thank you.
And there's plenty in the fund then covering this.
Yes, I don't, I don't know the, the exact number, but, but there's several hundred thousand dollars that are sitting in the fund, so.
Any more questions for Philip?
Phil, where do you intend to use this machine if it's approved in the city? On our surface streets if it needed? It's a, it's a machine that doesn't require asphalt, so we don't have to wait for the people to heat asphalt out in the airport. You don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, we, we purchased asphalt emulsion from the DOT. There's a facility now we'll be able to get it from. So that, where we get that and the clean rock chips you can get at several different quarries. But we can use it, you know, we go through the street, like go through the whole section and fix roads. And then we respond to complaints every day about potholes needing fixed. If it's the right tool for the job, we'll send it out. We fix those.
What's the, what's the normal life of this material once we start running plows over top of it?
I've seen chip seals last. I think, I mean, Court Street has one, it's probably twenty-five years old. Once this stuff gets packed in, I think it'll last just as long as asphalt would. So I mean, depends. If the concrete around it or asphalt around it starts falling out, it's going to come out too. But if it's surrounded by sound material, like sound pavement, it'll last a long time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Philip? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirty-nine, twenty twenty-four, awarding the contracts for asbestos abatement and demolition of a condemned property at one twenty North Davis Street, Dan Larson, one thousand dollar abatement, and Don Jones, seven thousand two hundred demolition, for a total of eight thousand two hundred dollars for the project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number two thirty-nine, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Let's go approve.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. The next two items are related to demolition bids for properties being dead by the city. There was a third that we also bid on. And somehow, things love to make us spend more time and effort, the bids happened to come in in a tie of all the numbers in all the universe. So we will have the third one come be at the next council meeting. We found a good process to settle that. But also, before we talk about the bids, both of these will involve awarding either part or all the contract to Dan Larson. Mr. Larson was the subject of conversation at the end of the last council meeting. And Mr. Paxton's here tonight as well. And one thing he had raised was a concern about awarding contracts to Mr. Larson while there's some other nuisance issues of property he owns. We don't have any policy that would preclude accepting bids from people in that situation. And, you know, SASS recommendation, as it stands now, is it to, to change our policy on how we accept or qualify bidders as with the nuisance complaint or nuisance issue. So we do so recommend awarding to Mr. Larson and we're going to try to look at resolving those issues at his property, separate from the work that he does on these. But I do want to make sure that's, that's pointed out and that, you know, Mr. Paxton's concerned and can get your consideration as you want in dispense of it. Also, I think we were lucky in terms of timing. We were able to get these bids kind of received before the hurricanes in Florida. It looks like a lot of our local demolition contractors are wanting to pack up and get some work down there. So we're glad we've got them on the hook for these to get finished first. But we did have bids as for asbestos abatement removal and demolition for one twenty North Davis. Those were accepted until two PM on October ninth. And we received two bids for asbestos and four bids for demolition. Mr. Larson submitted the best bid, the amount of one thousand for the asbestos removal. And then Don Jones submitted the best bid for demolition of this property and cleanup of the lot. And that bid was seven thousand two hundred. So for the combined eight thousand two hundred, SASS recommends awarding the contract to those individuals.
Council, have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two forty-one, twenty twenty-four, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of a condemned property at fifteen fifteen West Main Street to Dan Larson of Atomo, Iowa, in the amount of five thousand seven hundred dollars. Seven hundred dollars for abatement and five thousand dollars for demolition. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number two forty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Let's go approve. Thank you. Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. The property at fifteen fifteen West Main was also condemned at the same time. We accepted bids until two PM on October ninth. We received two asbestos bids and three demolition bids. And Dan Larson submitted the best bid in the amount of five thousand seven hundred dollars for asbestos removal, demolition, and cleanup. It was seven hundred for the asbestos and five thousand for the demolition.
Council, have any questions for Zach?
So this is significantly, the asbestos bid is significantly lower than the next one. Do we have concern about that? I mean, I'm not great at math, but that's like multiple times lower.
Yeah, there is a big difference. They do get, the demolition bid packet includes the entire report of what's present in the building. And so we don't accommodate a change order that would relate to what was tested and found. We've had change orders where something that wasn't tested, the asbestos inspector didn't find a flue liner and during the demolition, the contractor finds it. and during the demolition, the contractor finds it. We've accommodated that kind of change order, but if there's any request for a change order related to items that were in the initial asbestos report, we wouldn't accommodate that kind of change order. We ask the contractor to stick to that price.
Perfect, thank you.
So then, questions for Zach?
I did drive by, I was on Mabel in Maine today.
Yeah.
And um, you know, I wouldn't be happy with that close to my house. And um, so I don't, I really don't like the idea of rewarding somebody who's not being a good neighbor. And so it's just, you know, it is a concern that I have with this.
Yeah.
Like this to get fixed.
Yeah, and and we're absolutely uh, wanting to do that. One thing that uh, Mr. Rush and I were talking about before the meeting is uh, um, there's some some escalating things that we're gonna uh, do. We haven't really had a lot of progress over the last two weeks. Part of that, uh, Mr. Larson said that he was sick and required care in the hospital, but still, we haven't had very much progress. He's out there today, but today's the day of the council meeting, so um, we're, we're escalating things right now. We wanna get that, get that addressed. We don't have in the policy for performing anything that connects directly, and so we didn't make a staff recommendation to to do anything different um, other than to award the the best bid, but uh, it is something we wanna take seriously.
Yeah, and and without having a- anything specifically in policy, we do have legal requirements when we bid out projects to to go with the the best bid, best responsible bid. And so we need to find a reason to disqualify somebody, uh, and if he has performed on prior bids and it's not related to that, I don't know if that's enough to disqualify him outside of any significant policy change.
I I agree, Phil. I we, I know there are policies. I councilperson Reed, I I kind of agree. You're gonna do work for the city and and advocate for the city, you probably should be a responsible citizen. I mean, I understand his frustration. I understand, I also understand there's a lot of policies, so. Of course, there's no reason. I would just like to speed up the process of that property for these neighbors to get cleaned.
Yeah, I I think the issue is with that property, not with the person giving a bid. I think we have to deal with that situation. If he's not in compliance, we need to get him in compliance. That has nothing to do with bidding a project.
Yeah, I think that's uh, especially as the policy stands now, I think that's the the only way to address that right now, but I do think, you know, is this, if this doesn't get addressed, I think that adds a lot of uh, a lot of issues and uh, and it it'd be something we'd be vulnerable with.
How good of a job does he do on the cleanup? Okay, demolition and everything, and how how well is it cleaned up? Have we been happy with that?
Yeah, we have been, and and I, and that's just not specifically him. And all the contractors we work with really do a a good job making sure they see the grass. Mr. Larson and and a couple other contractors have even made sure if the demolition is completed at a time of year where um, the grass seed doesn't take, he's come back after the contract's closed and made sure those issues were addressed. He's come back and addressed uh, grading that ended up not performing the way it was expected to without a change order or things like that. Um, they they've done a, uh, all of our contractors have done a a good radical job to clean up.
Any other questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the next section of our agenda is public forum. Lucifer, I ask if anybody in the audience would like to speak on any items that's not on our agenda tonight? And I believe Mr. Paxton, you wanted to speak.
Yes.
So uh, you can come up and give your name and your address and the topic you wanna talk about, and you'll have three minutes to uh.
I can't believe there are three minutes, I'm afraid.
Go over that with.
I'll do what I can. Travis himself. I wanna show you some pictures.
And just for transparency for the public, you wanna explain what the topic is you're gonna talk about?
Well, there's not the one we got, not last week.
Well, but the people that work here, would you just?
Was the uh, the mess behind my house, and.
And that property is owned by Dan Larson, correct?
The property is not owned by him.
Oh, it's not owned by him?
No.
Okay.
By his daughter.
Okay.
And some of it, it ain't even owned by his daughter, right? Uh, there's uh, Travis Jones and uh, Joyce N. Johnson.
Okay. And where is your house located on there?
Mine is right here.
Okay.
And the upper two houses right here are the Jones and uh, Johnson.
Okay.
But as you can see, Danny's got stuff on their property. So are they getting summons to clean up their property? And also, this guy, he's got stuff on their property. Is it, are they getting the summons? He's got some over here on uh, J A M Enterprise. Some of that stuff is on their property. Are they getting notified to have it removed? I'm just curious.
Zach, can you provide any clarification on that?
Yeah, here's some of the property he or his daughter owns, that he built buildings here. You can see the rust falling off of this one. Here's a small building right here. There's a ground log hole underneath it. Uh, most of them houses have ground log holes under it. There's ground log holes over here, over here. They underneath this building here, both of them, they get in that building. Yeah, before, I don't know where they're, but back in these trees, it's on a vacant vacant lot that uh, I'm talking to Zach and I'm uh, Brian Morgan about buying it, 'cause I don't want that on there, behind my house. The taxes on that, the guy that owns that been in prison, I don't know how long, I talked to his parents. He was released this year. They have got no idea where he's at. Back taxes on that, and the interest is sixty thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
I'm not paying sixty thousand dollars for it, but that's, hopefully we can work something out, and I can get that bought and clean up the trees and brush and eliminate one spot to the ground polish and get into. And I will take care of it. I'll mow it. I'm gonna take care of it, Zach. My address, sixteen Connech, May.
So sixteen hundred block in East Main, you're able.
Well, here's here's an example of this stuff. They'd like to walk in there at night. Get dark and run into that. They've been sitting there for months and months. That one picture, I really wanted to.
There appear to be several disabled vehicles around the the lot.
Yeah, well, Zach last meeting, he said, and you can talk about his fire equipment that he uses for asbestos abatement. I'd like to see you get that out of there. There's front tire, huh?
Well, it sounds like, oh.
Pro- probably what we need to do, since this wasn't on our agenda tonight, the council really can't take any action, or really discuss it. So can we have this put on the agenda for next council meeting?
I- is there something specific you wanna have with regard to it, or maybe uh, Zach could talk with the you know, side of this and see if there's anything that needs any action, needs to be taken up by the council?
This was the alley. You did some work today. That's the alley, that's really left in the alley.
So Zach, can we work to get this on the agenda? You know, I mean.
Yeah, we could, we could put it as an agenda item. I don't know if that'd be for for more discussion. I don't know what kind of action would necessarily be um, options on the table for the council. Maybe have a good conversation with uh, Logan as well about uh, what kind of possible actions the council can take specific to a nuisance case.
There's a ground log hole underneath one of the sheds.
So we're looking at random pictures, something probably more put together.
Right, and and I think it'd be good if if Mr. Larson could be here uh, as well, like mention to him that that would be a benefit to have him be able to communicate.
There's corn, there's buildings, ground law.
He needs to get these issues fixed, and it's something we're.
Cause I thought he said last time you've been working with him to get him to understand that there's things he needs to get rid of.
Zach, is is he out of compliance? There's a van in one of those items. If somebody dumped dirt or whatever in it, I think there's supposed to be a certain process you do when you're filming wells, keep groundwater safe. Has that been done?
I think maybe if the two of you can get together and go through all of these items and and address those is we're we're past the three minutes at this point.
Yeah, come up with some recommendations or.
But I think staff can definitely work with you on that, uh.
Staff had a walk through of all the property with it, and that didn't work, so we're gonna take some further steps uh, this week that are gonna be a lot more severe and have that just.
Property I was talking about.
It's not something that we're gonna think about, we're definitely gonna. Okay.
I would like to purchase.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just because it's come up a couple times, and I know it's gonna come up the next conversation, some of those photos do look like they were taken pretty close up to objects on somebody else's property, and you know, we don't, we wanna get these issues addressed, but I know that Mr. Larson has an issue with with Mr. Paxton coming onto his property personally, and and I can assure him, we're getting there, we're getting those photos taken, so it'd be best if if he uh, he doesn't go personally onto the property to take photos.
Perhaps for the next meeting.
There's no cross match, so I'm so.
Zach, perhaps for the next meeting, uh, you could work with staff about um, providing an update on the process and what you do in agenda, um, property nuisance issues.
We can do that, and then we can begin in some.
Okay, thank you.
I do have another question on the sidewalks and stuff that was broke. That the city, on city property, they were supposed to do when they did the sewer separation, it wasn't fixed. Anything that none of that?
That was a separate issue, I guess.
It's if we have under warranty work, um, we're talking with the contractor, he's not been very responsive. Uh, the only remedy we have is to call his bond, and we don't think it's to that point yet. He has a two-year period to fix those issues that we come up with. We've had, we have more than just that sidewalk for him to come fix. Again, that's, I wish he would have come earlier in the year, 'cause there's some seeding form to do as well. But if he doesn't get it fixed in the allotted warranty period, we'll call his bond, but I don't think it's to that point yet. Pretty severe repercussion to do that to a contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Does anybody have any other uh, items that are not on our agenda tonight that they'd like to address uh, the council with?
Mayor Johnson, I would like to maybe take a moment to explain my extension on the consent agenda.
Okay.
It always has to do with the liquor license renewal. Not the other items necessarily. I just find myself caught between my conscience and law. I feel like legally, they have a right to renew those. And so that's why I don't just vote no necessarily. But I think it's uh, important to remember that there are a lot of people who suffer because of alcohol and deal with a lot of things. And so when these are, you know, approved, uh, there are people who are suffering. I think of people who maybe don't have all that they need to have because money's been spent on alcohol and maybe decent food items or clothes i- cloth items, work items, whatever they might need, even think about the person himself who is addicted and sees the harm that he's doing to a family or to himself, but can't get away from it. Safety issues, there's just things like that that come to mind, and so that's why I've been abstaining on that vote. Maybe there's a better way to handle it, but that's what I've been doing.
And you understand when you abstain, that's the same as a no vote.
I have come to understand that.
Yes, and I understand, Councilman Reed, I understand your background, and and I just wanna be transparent, buddy. My concern is is making a decision, and and I know there are people who suffer from addictions, and my heart goes out to them, I love them, I would do everything I can to them. But those are small businesses who rely on us to to protect their rights, and and I'm not down with you in any way. I I just feel like we're sitting back here, we need to observe the rights of everyone, and they're not doing anything illegal, they're not doing anything, although I do sympathize with the people you're talking about. That would be my only concern.
It'd be the same thing with cigarettes.
Right, right.
That's that's a legal thing, and there's people that abuse cigarettes, and there's people that don't abuse cigarettes.
Right, and 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 like I said, I I agree that, you know, that there's people need help. My bill's bad for, you know, people who suffer from addiction, but at the same time, I think, I think we need to, you know, we're ready to protect our small business as well and getting them what they need.
I appreciate your explanation, Dan.
And I would echo what councilperson uh, Hoffman says, but um, also again, I appreciate you um, explaining the extension, you know, the extension. Uh, and then prior to the meeting, we also discussed, you know, that in the future that could be pulled out um, and voted on individually.
So it doesn't affect his voting, no, that's the whole consent you tried to. Right.
I appreciate your clarification. Okay, uh, the last item is any uh, communications that the city council or the mayor wants to make to the public. I guess I would have one. I just want people to know that I'm gonna be not attending the council meetings in November, because I'm gonna have major surgery. I'm gonna have a total knee replacement on my left knee in the groin on October twenty eighth. So I will probably be out of commission for at least four weeks, so Councilman Galloway has been designated by me to as service mayor pro temp in my absence, so she'll be up to sit in this chair during the month of November, and I hope to be back in early December, but I just wanted uh, people know I'm having surgery, I'm not quitting, I'm just not gonna be around probably much for the month of November, but I hope to be back in early December.
Can we just have council meetings in your front room?
We could.
Okay, I just have one thing I wanted to add, just two seconds. I had a good meeting with J D at the airport yesterday. I just wanted to take two seconds. They got it together out there. J D, great leadership. I I loved it. He gave me a tour of his offices and what they did out there. And I gotta be honest, I I was surprised at what goes on out there and how well the staff is, so I just wanna publicly say, yeah, I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate what your staff's doing, and I had a great time out there, and I'm looking forward to more of those meetings, so thank you.
How much did he pay you to say that?
Nothing, I was like, I was.
No, I I I would, I would echo that same sentiment. He's got a very good staff out there, and they work like a well-oiled machine. I I can notice that over the last three years that I've been here, and you know, you don't have the staff problems if you got solid leadership, and he and Duke both really do a nice job of keeping that group of people working together very well, so I do agree with what he just said.
And they know their stuff.
They do, they do.
And just a reminder, did your houses um, enter for the spooky nights and lights? Um, yeah. You can email me, gallowayc@atoma.us.
Any other comments or communications that make?
The only comment I would like to make is that that, I have to thank Scott Aldrin for providing liquid refreshments for our staff. They thought they were being rejected for a while, but I assured him they weren't, and he showed up with water forms, and I, thank you, Scott.
Can you clarify if you want the project that was discussed at the end of the meeting on our work session meeting, or at the next regular council meeting in November? the project that was discussed at the end of the meeting on our work session meeting, or the next regular council meeting in November?
I was recommending the fifth, yeah.
Okay.
To provide time and for them to get their, yeah, work out something.
Okay, any other comments, communications? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting.
Thank you.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned and safe travels home.